Good evening and welcome to this regular session of the Lakeville Area Schools Board of Education. This meeting is now officially called to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members in attendance tonight include Director Kelleher, Director Shinley, Director Lind, Chair Baker, Director Carley Anderson, Director David Anderson, and Director Thompson. The board is joined by Superintendent Dr. Doug Van Zyle and members of the Executive Cabinet, Bill Holmgren, Dr. Emily McDonald, Dave Haveman, and Brenda Albrecht. And now on to good news.
All right, good evening. We'd like to start off this evening by sharing a quick update video from the latest progress that's made at Highview Elementary. You're also going to hear from some of the students and the staff and what they have to say. So it'll take just a minute for them to load it up and then we'll have the video.
Today we have a special report about the upcoming referendum vote on November 7th. Let's go now to our reporters in the field at Highview. Hi guys!
Hey everyone! We are so excited to be outside in front of Highview Elementary.
Tell us where you are and what you're seeing.
This is Lakeville's newest elementary school. It'll be the ninth elementary school in Lakeville, and we're seeing a construction project.
Can you show us some of the design features at the school?
So some of the things that we're excited about the features are the open floor plan. There's lots of natural light embedded throughout the school and the cafeteria. It is a wall of windows that brings in so much natural light and allows everyone to see out into the playground too.
What other staff do we need for this school?
So of course, any building needs to have teachers, but it's not just teachers. It's the additional student support like your office staff, your custodians, kitchen staff, noon supervisors.
Beyond the buildings, what kinds of resources, supplies, and equipment is needed to run a school?
We need to add things to classrooms like desks, chairs, places for students to work. We need to build in other supplies, like building the media center with materials there, projectors to use in our classrooms.
It's not just reading and writing. What other supports do we need for kids?
Our business is the people business, so we have people working with people, of course adults working with children. People have social, emotional needs as well, and so as part of that learning process, we're supporting those needs right as we work with students and the academics.
How does this new school benefit the whole district?
So many of our schools are over capacity. We're using spaces like libraries, common areas, as classrooms. And so when this building is able to open, we can relieve a lot of our schools and be able to have our kids have spaces where they can navigate, move freely, and teachers have spaces that aren't overcrowded.
If it's our doctrine, can you show us some of your favorite things in the building?
We can't wait to show you the new school. Follow us! Brett, wait for me! This is one of my favorite spaces, the media center. The media center is two stories tall, so up above we have a lot of natural light coming in from some skylights, and then radiating into the classrooms on the other side, but then also filling this space with warm natural light. So where I'm standing right now is in the kitchen and cafeteria area. Over on this side is where our cafeteria staff will be preparing all of our great meals for our kids, where they'll be able to come and get it right here and then go and sit in this beautiful space. This is another favorite space. This is the team area. Each team area, there will be separate classrooms. The team area is a space for students to do collaborative work, work individually, and then if we transition in here, this is a classroom space, and the classrooms directly connect to the team area, and each grade level will essentially have its own team area inside of classrooms. I'll race you to the playground!
Let's go!
Last one has to jump in the puddle!
Thanks for joining us at Highview Elementary!
Back to you in the studio! Thanks everyone!
Thanks for your time and expertise.
See you guys next time on Show and Tell.
Don't forget to vote on or before November 7th. Bye!
Thanks Brad!
Excited to announce that our first students for the 2023-24 school year. This is a recognition program that highlights an elementary, middle school, and high school student each month. Students are nominated by staff members. Our Students of the Month for October are Ellie Lind, first grader from Christina Huddleston, Solene Abdisay, a seventh grader from McGuire Middle School, and Carden Schultz, a tenth grader from Lakeville Online Academy. And so you can also go to our website and you'll see their pictures up there. We also have been kicking off another thing for our staff. It's Staff Member of the Month for October 23. We're excited to have this new monthly staff recognition program that highlights staff that are nominated by other employees. Each month, staff will be nominated and reviewed, and two staff members will be selected and highlighted across the district. Our Staff of the Month for October are Eric Schmidt, Special Ed DCD Program Teacher at Kenwood Trail Middle School, and Stacy Klotz, Learning Specialist at Lake Marion Elementary. Lakeville South Marching Band earned the third consecutive state championship title. On Saturday, October 14th, the Lakeville South Marching Band earned their third consecutive championship title at the 19th Annual Youth in Music Marching Band Championships. In addition to being named a Class AA State Champions, LSHS Marching Band earned Visual Champion, Color Guard Champion, and Percussion Champion. So congratulations to our seniors Jane Stires for earning one of nine Youth in Music Scholarships. So congratulations to all our folks involved in that. Lakeville South High School teacher Leah Hood has been selected as recipient of the American Geographical Society's 2023 Geography Teacher Fellowship. Ms. Hood is one of 42 Advanced Placement Human Geography Teachers selected from across the United States to participate in this sixth year of the initiative. So if you want to read more about what's going on in our district and amazing things that are happening, go to ISD194org backslash news. That's our good news for this evening.
Thanks to the Communications Department for putting together that video and our staff and students that participated. That was really fun to see. I enjoyed that. For Board Communications tonight, we have not had any participants this month in any of our stakeholder sessions, but we do have an update about 917 from Director David Anderson.
We've been working on the Superintendent's Evaluation the last couple of months and our goals, and our next meeting is on November 14th, so I get to go to three school board meetings. Yay! Oh, and we're looking for teachers. We're 20 teachers down, so if anybody needs a job.
That's a sad statistic to have that many educators in need right now, so yep, if you're looking for a job, apply.
Oh yes, and we're in contract negotiations too.
All right. Do any of the board members have any information that they'd need to add about committees that they've attended or council meetings they've attended this month? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda additions. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? Director Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to add public comment to the agenda.
Okay, so you're making a motion to add public comment as an addition to the agenda?
Yes.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Director Shinley. We'll go ahead and open up the floor for some discussion on this. Anybody have anything to add on that? Director Lind?
This is a topic that we discussed at our last work session, and I thought we were getting some clarity and some collaboration on a solution, and my question would be, I think we need more time in the work session to get to that point. I don't think this is the media where we should discuss it at this time.
Director Kelleher?
I agree. I know you weren't able to be present, but the agreed-to-action item on it was to have it on the agenda for the next work session, so we were going to have a dialogue and discussion at that time, so I think this would be premature to have any discussion here tonight.
Director Thompson?
Yeah, you know, I had a chance to listen to it, and I do agree that there are some further dialogue that might be needed in regards to, in regards to like the process and miscellaneous things like that. You know, so I want to be mindful, like, you know, when I ran, the intent was to provide some more transparency and public engagement around what's going on within our schools, and so I believe that having public comment is essential in hearing what's going on from our community. I know that it was discontinued last year during a working session, and so what I would like to do is propose, if you are open to entertaining this, that we reinstate public comment to occur once a month during the regular board meeting, following the existing or previous process and procedures we had in place. In parallel, the Board of Education will create a policy to add public comment and stakeholder sessions, along with any updated procedures and processes. Personally, this year, we've had a lot of big topics, from budget issues to, I think there was the A&amp;I Plan, to levy issues, and while stakeholders can provide comment via email or through stakeholder sessions, I feel that there was nothing wrong with how it was done last time, so there's no reason why it would be too difficult to reinstate it. And then again, in parallel, the board will create a policy more officially to add public comment and stakeholder sessions into one. So that's what I would like to propose as a motion, if this particular agenda topic can be added.
Okay, so in order here, we're going to go with Director Kelleher has a comment, and then Director Carley Anderson.
So again, what was discussed at the work session was that this be brought to the next work session in a holistic and deliberate discussion around our total public engagement. So again, I'm saying that I believe this is premature to have this discussion at this time, because we all agreed as a board to discuss this at the next work session in totality, to know what our total public engagement process would look like, and this is just one element of that, and I don't think we should be acting on one single element when we know as a board goal, we have a total public engagement process, or a goal to increase public engagement, and we should have that as a total discussion and not just a one-off discussion for this matter. And again, those are more appropriate conversations and discussions at a work session, or our board development sessions, but not for the actual working meeting.
Yeah, Brian, I just want to say, this is something that obviously a lot of us care about, and I know something you've brought up several times in terms of wanting to have it be a discussion at this level, and so it was just unfortunate that I think you couldn't be at the work session. I would like to have further discussion with you involved in that, just because it wasn't like a, I think at this point, we're not at a place of, do we bring public comment back or not? It's more, if we do bring it back, how do we do it, and what makes sense, given some of the challenges that were present previously, and how do we make it be effective and useful? And so I would say that, I appreciate you bringing this up, and I also think it would be helpful for us to have more discussion as a board with you involved in that.
Director Thompson?
Yeah, I think I do agree and understand everyone's point of view. You know, with 11 months have gone by without public comment, and if we all agree that there is value in public comment, but maybe not so sure about the process and the procedures and the miscellaneous steps like that, the longer we dialogue around the process and the steps, the longer our community doesn't have an opportunity to share what they want to share. And so, in my mind, if the previous public comment process worked for however many years, I don't see any major concern reinstating that, as we as an organization, as we as a board in parallel, refine the policy as we are doing with the other 900 policies that we still need to review as a group. And so, that's my point of view. Again, the more discussions we have on this, the more opportunity that other topics will come up, and it's not a very complicated ask, but that's my point, point of view, so.
Director Lind?
I totally agree with you. It's your point of view. My feeling is, this needs to be a collaborative process, and not just listening to you and then say, yeah, let's do that. That's not collaborative. We need to work as a group, and I think we all see the value in public comment. It's just that we need to get there together. And your comment regarding, it worked before, why did we, you know, let's go back to that. It didn't work, and that's why we were trying some other things, including stakeholders. We never did say we're going to get rid of the public comment during a board meeting. We just said, let's try this and see how this works. Let's be fluid. Maybe we can bring back, you know, public comment, and this is where we're at right now. That's where we're at right now. We're really close on a lot of things here, and just because it's taking some time, I think it's going to be worthwhile that we make it a collaborative process. I really do.
Director Kelleher?
Just to clarify a statement that you've made about them not having the ability to provide public comment. They do. They can provide public comment. We have phone numbers that they can reach us on through the website. They can email us. They can call and request face-to-face meetings. They have the stakeholder session. There's lots of opportunities. That was just one avenue that was not doing well within our community, and I do encourage you to go watch some of those meetings as you make up, you know, as you're developing your thoughts around the total engagement, public engagement process that we are going to be discussing at the next work session. So the community has many ways to provide feedback to the board and to our administration, and they do. So that's just an avenue that's just not there at this time, and so again, I'm not sure where we need to go from here, but we've all agreed as a board that it was going to be addressed at the next work session.
So my viewpoint on the situation is that, I totally agree with you, Director Thompson, that transparency is important, and that's been something that's important to me too, which I think is why this conversation has been going on and this dialogue between the board has been going on for a while, because we've been trying to find this avenue to make it more appropriate or more accessible for our public. You know, I don't find it something that I like to say when we don't have any participants in stakeholder sessions, because that's telling me that that avenue is not really working either. But then I also don't, you know, I've attended some of the public comments that we've had in the past that weren't as effective as a modes of communication for our community either, because it provided environments where people did not feel safe. So I do agree that I think we need more time as a board to work through this. I think it fits with the board process that we've been trying to do, which is to get the information, to have time to process it, to work through that process. I don't like rushing into things, because then we end up with something that we have to backtrack on and try to fix. I'd rather have an avenue that we can present to the public that gives them multiple modes of communication with the board, so that they can have their voice heard, because I think that's very important. And I agree that public comment has served some sort of a mode of communication for some people, and I think it should be noted that just because we don't like what people are saying, doesn't mean we don't want to hear what they have to say. That's not why public comment was discontinued momentarily by the board. We're just trying to find ways where people feel comfortable and safe in bringing their comments forward. I do think it's something that we're still working on as a board. We made that one of our goals for a reason, because it is important to everyone that sits at this table. We all agreed on that. But how that looks at this time, it is on our agenda for our next working session, so that we can work through that. That won't move from the agenda, so we do have time to discuss it. I don't think it needs to be discussed tonight. Director Carley Anderson?
Yeah, I was just going to propose that maybe we, in terms of our next working session, maybe it will be helpful, because I think sometimes in these situations, when we've had this come about many times, like you've brought it up several times, and unfortunately, we had discussion when you weren't there, it might just be helpful to create an action item around that in terms of decision-making, and maybe that will kind of get us all together, because then we feel like we're moving forward. Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, I will remind the board that to add an item to the agenda, per Robert's rules, we have to have a two-thirds majority, so with a seven-member board, that means five members need to vote yes to add it to the agenda. So we'll go ahead and put it to a vote right now. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
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 I think we have two, five on that. So that will be something that we'll discuss at our next working session. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
So moved.
I have a motion by Director Lind. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Carley Anderson. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we have the approval of the agenda. Do any board members have any items from the consent agenda that they would like to remove for further discussion? Director Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to pull out Letter B, the employment recommendations, Letter C, payments of bills, and Letter I, policy legislative updates.
Okay. Are there any other items that board members would like to remove for further discussion? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items B, C, and I?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Director Carley Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Lind. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right, Director Thompson, what were your questions involving Item B, employment recommendations, leave requests, and resignations?
Yeah, so I've got three questions. I'll start with the first one. I am seeing another resource that was hired in a higher MA Step for Special Education. I think I've seen like three of these over the past couple recommendation lists. So I guess I'm just looking to learn more, because MA 30 Step 60 is the highest, from my understanding, the highest possible salary band range. And so, per the deficit reductions, we are going to offset roles in a lower introductory salary band range, so I'm just going to look into, learn more about that particular role.
This is similar, I think, to the questions that you've asked before. Remember, there's some high-needs areas that we have difficulty attracting people in, and those were the areas that were shared. When we find a qualified candidate, they may not be at that lower range. So when you don't have a qualified position, similar to what Dave was talking about in 917, you can't find people to fill positions. When you do find a quality person, we've been able, we have to bring them in at that rate, or otherwise we won't get them.
You don't have anybody. So this is the special education teacher, I believe, is, do we have, do we have any more open recs left, or is this the last one?
No, we still have several openings.
And are we anticipating the remainder of them to be in this level as well?
Are they going to be what level, I'm sorry?
MA plus 30 Step 16.
Depends on what the person brings to the table. So there's, it could be a brand-new person that graduates in December. If we have positions until then, it could be somebody that family moves and comes into our area, and they may come from another state and get certified. So there's multiple ways that we would try to fill those positions, so.
And so then I can also assume then, based on, I believe, the $500,000 savings that we were projecting, adding this resource still puts us on track for that particular target?
Our budget as presented to you has not changed, so if there's something different in that particular area, we're still within the total budget amount, so that may be an area that we take a look at. Plus, I think Dave would also say this, and if I say it wrong, throw something at me. If we continue to have openings, you're also looking at having to provide services to students and families that may be a third-party provider, which will probably be much more expensive than hiring a person on our pay scale. Would that be an accurate statement, Dave? And as Dave just said, we also have some of that, because if we didn't have some of those third-party providers, we'd be falling further and further behind, and we'd be after offering compensatory services and time outside of the school year, which even becomes more costly. Yeah, and we're still doing that, because, so it builds on top of each other. It's a snowball. If you don't have the right position to meet the IEP needs of our families and our students, you've still got to offer those services in some way, shape, or form. So we have to try to fill those positions with the highest quality people we can.
Does that answer your questions for Item B?
It does.
Okay.
The first one.
Okay. Do you have more?
Yes, I have two more. So I've got, the second one is, I am reading that there is a school success liaison, and I apologize, I didn't have time to look into that. Like, what exactly is a school success liaison? Because I know that it was a hire, so I'm just trying to understand this.
I'll have some folks come up, because it's, as with several positions in our district, they've played multiple functions and different roles, and so they may be known by some other title someplace else. So Emily, if you want to speak to that? I think your mic may be off. They may have to turn it on.
I'm loud, but not loud enough for people out there.
Now give it a shot.
Good to go? Okay, thank you so much. Yes, thank you for your question. Our school success liaisons in most districts are generally referred to as basically like equity liaisons, so they work for our Equity Services Department. They are funded through our Achievement and Integration Plan, so the dollars that we receive is specific for that purpose. Their primary role is to be in the building, working with students, primary role is to be in the building, working with students, families, staff, and administrators to help support our students, navigate our system, making sure that they have resources and access to resources. They also help if they are having some particular challenges by connecting them to our resources in our buildings, like our student support workers and/or community resources and/or our administrators. So, essentially, they are a key strategy for us to make sure that we have families that are able to navigate our system. They also do a little bit of translating and interpreting for us, but that's not certainly their primary role. Yes.
And, and those are restricted dollars. Those aren't general fund dollars. So, those, those dollars have to go toward those components of the plan.
Yes, that's correct.
Director Keller?
And those are dollars that were in a budget that we approved back in March?
So, they come through the Achievement and Integration Plan. So, those dollars are part of the overall larger budget.
And it's something we approved.
But as Dr. Van Zyl said, they are restricted funds and can only be used for certain purposes. And those purposes need to be outlined in the, in the plan clearly where those dollars will go. And over 80% of the money we get from the State of Minnesota for Achievement and Integration has to go to direct student support. So, this is one of the ways in which we utilize those dollars to support students.
Director Thompson?
And do, do these individuals provide academic advising to, like here, like whatever, like, like parts of what a dean would do as well, or?
So, they're a little bit different than a dean. We did hire, this year, one of our school success liaisons, well, their focus was around career and college readiness. So, this was really to provide opportunities and access to career and college readiness, more like a career counselor type of a role versus like an administrator type of role. So, we do have one person on the team that does focus on that work. So, as an example, they just did a field trip recently to go to do a college visit. So, it would be that type of thing.
Okay.
Right, are we moving on to question three?
Yes. So, I am looking at your, I'm looking at the pivot table graph XYZ that was, that was shared, and it does make it challenging to kind of see what got added, what didn't get added. And so, I had to go back and look at the previous slide. It would be helpful for me if, if there was a, maybe a column that had a delta or, or a variance change. But as I was looking at it, I think it looked good. I did have a question on the custodial maintenance. And so, I think at the previous month, you guys had like six more resources, and then, and now we're letting go six more resources is what I saw. So, I'm just curious to know what, what prompted that change?
Are you referring to the, the dashboard at the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it, cause it's complicated. So, I'm just trying to understand why there was a, almost a 8% reduction in that custodial staff from the previous month.
Bill, do you want to speak to that? The, the one thing I would tell you is when you're taking a look at staffing, you have to remember some of our areas, you have people that come and go for different reasons. Either they're released because of some situation within the district, they may choose to move. That may be our leaf staff, may be custodial maintenance. It's not normally your teaching staff, even though some of our teaching staff have issues that come up. So, what you have coming in and out in some of those areas is normal to have take place in those positions.
Totally makes sense. But you had 91 custodial staff, I think, last month. And so, I'm just wondering why we're down to 85. So, when you, when you're cutting staff by five, six percent, I was just curious if those are a major reason. That's all. That's, that's almost $200,000 in savings.
Okay. First of all, we have shifted quite a bit of our custodial staff out of the custodial area to LTFM, the maintenance area. The, the numbers from month to month should have not changed. They're the same. The, the different columns you're seeing there are different years, not different months. Okay?
The three columns at the end are three different years.
So, I'm looking at grand total, report from 918 had 91, and then grand total, report from 1017, 85. And so, I'm looking at a different, I'm looking at your, whatever the, the employment recommendations dashboard. It doesn't have a three-year column, if that's, am I mistaken?
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't exactly what you're looking at. We have the same amount of custodians this year as we did last year. Some are paid in a different program area than they did the previous year.
So, so the, so the six FTE variants, those resources are now being paid in a different fund bucket?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's not highlighted anywhere. So, I was, just wasn't sure where and why. I just saw a reduction of six. And does that have an impact in district office? Does it have an impact in different places? But if they're being funded in a different bucket?
Yeah, the main, the main change is, you see in the budget, you know, restricted funds versus non-restricted.
Got it. Which is, okay.
Do we have any more questions on item B?
I don't, not on that one.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve item B?
I make a motion.
Motion by Director Keller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director David Anderson. Any more discussion on item B, employment recommendations, leave requests, and resignations? Okay, hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries for item B. Item C was payment of bills and claims, wire transfers, and investments. Mr. Director Thompson, what would be your questions on that?
Yeah, so I've got inquiries on this financial forecast report. It doesn't make sense. So, if we've got savings in there and it should show up in the LTF bucket, correct? So, if, that you, that you guys shared. Cause the current year-to-date shows that we are, we received $22 million, and then our outlays is about 24 with a surplus of 2.1 million for current year-to-date, correct? That's, that's what I saw in your, in the PDF that was shared earlier. I guess what I'm trying to better understand is that there's a variance that's an over and under. And so, when I looked at this, we are, from my, what I read or read, whatever we had, maybe this isn't the one.
If you're taking a look at one of the things and not, and maybe this will answer your question. If it doesn't, just say it doesn't. You have to remember we're in negotiations. So, we also have folks that are working off of last year's contracted salary amount.
Yeah.
So, that has a variance in the budget as well because we haven't, they are not even being paid for their years of experience on the lane. So, that's a fairly large dollar amount. That would equate to that variance right now. And Bill, again, if I'm saying something wrong, tell me I'm saying something wrong. But when negotiations are finished, those dollars still have to be paid retroactively. So, that variance may be higher now, but it'll be expenditure later on, if that makes sense. If that's, if that's the area you're looking at, I'm not sure.
Yeah. So, so I apologize. I found the, the PDF that was, that I was referencing. The administrative bucket shows that we're $192,000 in overage, and the direct support services were $524,000 in overage over the next, over the past two months. And I do understand the elementary were under 2.2, obviously with negotiations underway. But we're already, you know, $700,000 over in the administrative and district support services. So, I'm just looking to better understand kind of like, like, how do we get over? What's in that list? Or?
Bill, come and explain it to you.
I just get the metrics and the numbers, and there's no explanation.
The only other thing you have to remember is that ultimately, not that we don't want every area to be spot-on, but there's going to be variance in the school district budget. The, the biggest issue for us is hitting the target at the end of what we told you. If it was going to be a million dollars, then we can't spend more than a million dollars. So, there's some flexibility within those areas to make those adjustments. So, even though something may be out of whack this month, it probably gets caught up two months from now or three months from now. But Bill, if you want to answer that specifically.
We have to remember that when we budget our school district, we're budgeting for the whole year. Okay? The money that we receive is very cyclical, and it's not the same every year. So, on the revenue side, it's very difficult when we try to present a budget to you and show you where we are. It's different on a monthly basis than it was the year, the year before.
Yep.
So, in, in these reports, what we try to do is we go back, we look at three years at a time, and we, we look at how that money came in, and we take some averages, and we assume it's going to be close in the year that we're in. So, you're going to see some cyclical, you're going to see some over one year, I mean, one month, can be a little under the next month. But I think we get to the end, we're pretty confident where we're going to be. Now, on the, on the expenditures, a little bit of the same thing. You have to remember that on the front end, our, our administrators, our, this administration area, district support areas, they're 12-month employees. Okay? So, we're paying from July through, with teachers, we start paying them in September.
Yep.
And they go through to the end. So, we're, we're trying to find a good way to present these, these amounts to you. Like I said, we're looking at the way it's been spent in the past. You have to remember that we made, you know, you know, some cuts this past year. So, so exactly the way we're spending it now is going to be a little different than we did before. So, I, I understand what you're seeing. You're seeing an over, an overage in those two areas. And at the same time, you'll see our underage in every single other category where, and at this point, we're showing like three, three and a half million dollars under budget.
Yeah.
And as Superintendent Van Zyl said, remember that with our teachers, with our paras, none of that, negotiations have been done. So, they're getting spent less than we expect them to do at this point in time. But that will catch up when we get, when we finish negotiating with those. Cause we'll have those catch-up payments.
Okay, Van Zyl?
And just a little bit of a reminder, I know you weren't at the last work session, you weren't able to be there. But the board asked that these dashboards come back at the next work session. So, Bill can walk through those for a couple of you that weren't able to be there. So, I would say if there's specific questions in regard to that, then that's something I would probably say is, is part of the work session discussion, too. And also that a majority of the board, I think, wants to have conversations about. That's why they put it on the, the next work session as well. Because this is something new that we're trying to share with you to be able to have a whole picture of what's going on. But the picture is not always complete because as they can tell you, as Bill just kind of shared with you, our revenues don't come in month to month the same. Our expenditures aren't month to month the same. So, you have to build it with that variance in mind.
Yep.
Director Thompson?
Yeah, so, so I get that. And I think, I think the, the two things that I would ask, one, you know, and we can discuss this next, at our working session, is obviously you've got a year-to-date actuals, but it doesn't compare to what you were forecasting. So, we don't really know what the variance is unless I look at the annual, on the annual column, which is fine. And so, that's something we can discuss later. But I think the, the reason this caused some alarm was you've got $8.5 million in the budget, and you're already $750,000 over the budget, and we're only into October. And so, that's, that's what caused some alarm because how, we need to be able to see when we're on a track towards overage so that we don't run into a scenario at the end of the year and say, oh, by the way, you need to cut $7 million for the next year. So, that's, that's why we, we need to keep an eye on these kind of things.
And, and I guess I would add, that's also why we bring things to you. If there's budget adjustments later on in the year to you, because we're not expecting to come to you at the end of the year and say, oh, by the way, we're going to have to make reductions. That's why we built the budget that you guys approved to show you where that overage is. And we have to stay within that budget because if we don't, then that's where you have issues with the board. To be able to say to us, well, you projected this and you were off. How come these things are off? There is going to be variance within categories, but we have some fluidity in where we can adjust those things from. So, we try to, to overestimate our expenditures a little bit, underestimate our revenues a little bit, so that we do have that flexibility at the end of the year to stay within our budget. Cause none of us want to have to go back through that process again. And I believe, given some time to walk through this, you'll be able to see that we're going to be, should be pretty close unless there's some things that happen that we're not aware of. So, but I think, again, part of that can be part of the work session discussion as we move forward.
Director Carley Anderson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I learned a lot at our work session about how this actually works. And I think when you're just looking at the numbers, it's like, what in the world is happening? Cause it's up and down and around. But it was really helpful for you to review, Bill, like, this is why you see these fluctuations, and we're anticipating those fluctuations, and then it comes back around. So, I, I just think it'll be helpful at the next work session because I think the budget works very differently than probably in other situations or businesses. So.
Director Thompson, do you have any more questions around item C?
I do not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve item C, payment of bills and claims, wire transfers, and investments?
I motion.
Motion by Director Shinley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Lind. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for item C. The last item that you had, asked to have discussion around was item I, which is poly, policy legislative updates for 418, 419, and 102.
Yep. Yeah, so, I had a chance to quickly review these, and I apologize, I did not have a chance to read them in, in thorough. But I do want to just kind of make sure that we're following best practice. I believe back in June, we did a first reading on policy 522 because there were significant red line updates. I think as I read these, there seems to be a lot of red line updates in all three of them. And so, my recommendation is to, you know, add, add another meeting or, I don't, I don't want to say a second reading, but like, I think this, we should have some more time for the community to take a look at this. I know there's, there's state statutes, so there's not a whole lot that can be done, but providing some transparency for the community, I think that's worth it because that's what we did with the policy 522. So, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes, yes. Last board meeting, we, at the work session, we talked about having Brenda and the team work on the statutes and the legislative, and that's what this is. It's mainly just that. Brenda, we, I did ask Brenda that if she wouldn't, wouldn't mind just explaining what the statute is so then we are aware of what's going on, on the change. That it's just not a boom, we're just going to change that. This is why it needed to be changed. So, these are just purely statute and legislative. And then, as we go forward and we find that maybe we need to make some changes, are we on to look at, look to see if there's any changes? We can, as a policy committee, when we put that together, that we can go through those and make, look at those different types of changes.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, at our working session, the board discussed, right now, we have a board member that sits on the policy committee with district staff. Brenda's a part of that team. And they're going through our policies, updating the ones that are, that need updated by legislative statute, the things that have changed. These are purely legislative updates. So, things that we have to do, the language is just coming straight from statute. The board decided that they wanted a separate committee, a policy committee that's just of the board to look at our, through policies that we want to revise and add changes to based on the needs of our district. That's a, a small committee of the board. We are still working through the process on that. We, we don't have any members appointed to that yet, but we do have some interest, and there will be some further discussion on that. So, these changes for these policies are purely legislative. I'm just touching on what Bree had said.
And we want to make sure that, so we can keep on the schedule that we have to get them through because we are so far backlogged on those, just to make sure we can get them moving forward. And then we can, Dr. Van Zyl was at the review and revision. There's a separate, a separate term.
A correct, a separate committee for that. Yes. Director David Anderson?
Madam Chair, in the past, I've asked if we could, it's a little legislative history on some of these, even though they're, you know, mandated by statute. Cause I would like to know, and I think a lot of the public would like to know, why these were enacted. So, if we could work on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment before Brenda starts? We did talk about that extensively at the work session, and those are audio recorded for the audience members to listen to as well.
I know, but I still, but the legislature, I would like to know the legislative history behind some of these mandates. I was just saying it's mandated. It would be nice to know.
So, for these three policies specifically, these are all as a result of the changes that were made during the 2023 legislative session. So, all of the changes to law, changes to statute that happened during that legislative session are all specifically laid out in these three policies. So, that's where these changes are coming from.
Right, I understand that. But there's also legislative history that's added onto them in the committee work. It would be just like to know broad strategy, why these statutes were enacted. That's what I would like to know. I think a lot of the public would like to know that, too.
Director Carley Anderson?
You can get that on Westlaw or Lexis or?
Well, I guess I wonder what your role in this, Brenda, is because I feel like from an, probably from an HR standpoint, in terms of updates, your role is to follow these up, not necessarily, I guess, is that in, within your role definition?
For me to explain why the legislator may, legislation may have made the changes that they have, that would take a lot, hours and hours and hours of research for me to do.
But you understand why I'm asking that. So, I guess, Madam Chair, I would like-
And that's out there publicly. I mean, if, if you're following policies and laws, it's out there for an individual.
But it's not that, it's not that easy to find, though. I would ask our policy committee, when they're established, then to work on that, please. Thank you.
So, I would like to remind the board of just our, our meeting norms on what we're working on here, which is be prepared, be engaged, respectful dialogue, no surprises, and one board, one voice. While I appreciate the dialogue and the conversation and the questions around some of the items on the consent agenda, I do feel like this kind of gets away from our respectful dialogue because with respect to members of the executive cabinet, I would much rather have some of these questions in advance so that they could prepare and have better answers or, you know, so that we can actually educate our community and our board members around some of these questions. questions that we have. I think it would be better served to have some of these questions in advance. I agree, Brenda, I feel like the legislative history and background on that would be kind of hard to come up with on the spot and it would require some research, but it is something that our policy committee could do. And like I said, I totally appreciate the questions and the dialogue and I'm not discouraging anyone from asking any questions. But I do feel like if we really want to learn from these questions, then it might be better served to have some of them in advance so that members of the executive cabinet could prepare. Do we have any further questions on item I? Director Thompson?
No, I don't have any further questions, but just a few statements, I think, for general awareness of policy. Thank you. General awareness, the four eighteen is drug-free workplace, drug-free school. They've incorporated non-intoxicating cannabinoids, so everyone knows. Also, I believe then for, again, general awareness, in 2026, 2027, the school district must implement a comprehensive education plan on cannabis use and substance use. So for general awareness. Policy one oh two also states that the general policy they have included is to provide equal educational opportunity for all students. The school district does not unlawfully discriminate on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, marital status, parental status, status with regard to public assistance, disability, sexual orientation, including gender identity and expression or age. The school district also makes reasonable accommodations for students with disabilities. A lot more red line that the community members can read if they want to. And then policy four nineteen talks about possession and use of tobacco, tobacco-related devices, especially vapes, and awareness and prevention around that. So I know that vaping is probably a, a popular thing in a variety of age brackets. So I think that having a policy updating around our position on vapes is good for the public to be aware of.
Thank you. Director Carley Anderson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I only want to say, I mean, to your point, Kim, I think one of the things that's hard is, you know, we had a quite extensive work session last week that was, I don't know, three hours long. And so I guess I'm wondering, you know, what, so the public does have access to listen to that and the policies were reviewed by Brenda in quite, I would say, extensive fashion. And so I want to be respectful of everybody's time in terms of what we review at this table, just with kind of, I understand the public might not want to sift through all of the work session, but it is organized where you can kind of go to different areas if you can, at least the last time I listened to one, you can target certain areas if you have questions about it. I don't know how much we should be reviewing at the table. Maybe that's something for us to discuss at our next work session.
Director Thompson?
I think my, my point of view was that there's a significant amount of red lines, whether it's statutes or not statutes. We, I believe, as a, as a group agreed that policy five two, five two-two had a lot of red lines and it was mostly statutes anyways, and we still had that shared with multiple, a first reading and a second reading. And so if we're going to change that process, which is fine, I just want to make sure that we're aligned.
You're, you're correct on that. We did for that policy have a reading on it because there was a lot of red line, but at our working session that we had on Tuesday, the majority of the board agreed for these policies because we had had such extensive discussion on it that it would be fine to put them on the consent agenda. So that was agreed to by the board at that working session.
Director Lind?
I agree with Carley that a lot of our time here, we shouldn't be doing this and it's a regular session. My suggestion is we all get the packet on Friday. If you have questions that you need just clear answers to, please contact the D O before Tuesday. And, and that way we don't have to take the time at the board meeting to have those questions answered. And also in my mind, delaying to a board meeting is putting our district office staff on the spot. I don't think it's, they should be on the hot seat at all. So if you have questions regarding items in the packet, get them answered before the board meeting and we probably wouldn't have to even bring it up here.
And more to your point, Director Lind, not necessarily that they're on their spot because I trust their expertise in the areas that they work in, but if we're really, truly asking the questions to learn, then so that they can be prepared and provide that, that information for us.
And we also say no, we also say no surprises.
Right.
You know, and it's a surprise.
Director Carley Anderson?
One thing I just wanted to add is because, as Bree has pointed out, we have so many of these to get through, I just, I think if we are to take so much time, we're just not going to get through them. So that was something we talked about last week, too, is if it's really just statute-based, that's not something that we can do anything about. So it's not, not that it's not worth review, but they are reviewed during work session and I think it's important to just push those through that so that we can get updated so that then we can focus on what we want to potentially revise as a board, to just reinstate what you said.
Director Kelleher?
Is it okay for me to make a motion to accept the policy legislative updates because we've got a really great audit report, very positive audit report coming up? And I'd like, now that we're almost an hour into the meeting, I'd like our community to stick around and listen to the audit because it's a very good report. So I'd like to make a motion.
So we have a motion by Director Kelleher to approve item I, policy legislative updates. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Lind. Any further discussion from board members? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Are you an aye or a nay?
I'm a positive.
Okay. So we have six ayes and one nay. Motion carries. All right, so our next item on the agenda is reports with recommended actions. Letter A would be the fiscal year twenty-three audit acceptance, Bill and auditor. Sorry, I didn't have your name on here.
And it is a great report, so I want everybody to stick around who's listening.
Madam Chair, Directors of the School Board, Superintendent Van Zyl. Yes, tonight we are bringing forward our final annual report and we, I do have Caroline Stitzman here from Bergen K D V, our auditing firm, to go through the details with you. You've all been given electronically the final books and you've been given a paper book this evening, too.
As mentioned, I'm Caroline Stitzman. I am a partner involved in the audit of your school district for June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. So I'd like to take a few minutes of your time and go through the results of that with you. I'm going to move along here. So the main reason you ask us to work with you is to provide an opinion on your financial statements. That is the thickest booklet that you have, all of the numbers of the district are housed within there. Our job is to provide that opinion. The opinion we're giving is what's called an unmodified opinion, that's the highest level that you can receive and not a change from what you've received in previous years, meaning we believe the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. So outside of looking at just the numbers, as we go throughout our audit, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards.
Director Thompson?
Yeah, not sure if your mic needs to be turned on or not, so just throwing it out.
Wondering the same thing.
A little closer? I can do that.
I think Kim went out there.
Sure. Is that better or no? Maybe I just got to go closer. It's me. It's just me, I'll talk louder. All right, thank you, yes.
Thanks, Director Thompson.
Yes. As I was mentioning, outside of looking at just the numbers, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Those standards require us to consider internal controls as we go throughout our process. As highlighted here, we did not have any findings or items related to that. That is something we don't often get to stand in front of boards and communicate, so that is some of the good news that you're referring to. Oftentimes, there are certain things that come up just throughout the process that we are required to communicate in written form and you don't have any of those. So an additional component of that, of the audit process that we go through is to conduct an audit in accordance with uniform guidance. So because you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal dollars, we have to do some additional work. So we have to pick some of those specific programs and we tested three of those programs. No findings related to any of those and an unmodified opinion for those as well. One final component before we look at some of the numbers is in regards to Minnesota legal compliance. So the Office of the State Auditor puts together seven checklists filled with many state statutes that we ask a number of questions of your management team about. We did not have any findings related to any of that either. So with that, we'll dig into the financial analysis and we start with general education aid, with that being your largest funding source as a school district in the state of Minnesota. We look at the two main drivers of that, obviously much more complicated, we all know that, but formula allowance and pupil units are the two main drivers of that and focusing on that two thousand and twenty-three line and the two percent increase that was received. And here we start looking at your pupil units and we begin with your resident A D M. So these are only the students living within your district. And for two thousand and twenty-three, resident A D M increased by two hundred and seventy-seven or two point four percent. That was just the same information, just in a nice chart. And then if you apply the weighting factors that are at the top of this slide, as well as take into consideration an open enrollment, you arrive at the adjusted weighted A D M. And this is the amount that you're paid off of from this date. So seeing, kind of following suit in what we saw on the resident side of things, seeing an increase there and following down to the total adjusted weighted A D M, an increase there as well. So here we dig into the actual numbers. So the general fund sources of revenues is where we begin. So in total, general fund revenues increased by six point seven percent. Couple of the pieces that led to that, an increase in the levy as well as an increase in the state sources. And the state sources, those components that we just touched on, the formula allowance increase, pupil unit increase, special education is another piece as those costs continue to rise. Here we have a budget to actual snapshot for you for the general fund. The first column shows the original budget and the anticipated decrease in fund balance down at the bottom. After some budget amendments, the final budget is included in the second column, again showing the anticipated decrease in fund balance, the planned decrease in fund balance. And then the actual results there are in the third column and a variance is in the fourth column. So if we go up to look at some explanations to the total revenue line and all the way over to that far right column, you see a variance of about thirty-seven hundred dollars. If we apply a percentage to that, that's point zero two percent. So you can't get much closer than that, is what I will say. So outstanding in that regard to be that close on a very complicated revenue stream. Following the chart down on expenditures, again, over to that far right column, we see a variance there as well over budget. What I wanted to point out there just briefly is that there's an offset related to that because you have the least beaten financial purchase issuances below. The accounting for that, you're recording an item above in the, in the outlay line as well as below. So if you factor that part out, you're actually within point three percent of the budget there as well. That gets a little complicated, but just high level there, hopefully. So again, seeing the variance there at the bottom of the four hundred and seventy-one Here we have another way for, for you to look at general fund expenditures and that's in the pie chart format. Just briefly mentioning here, as a general, generally speaking, the percentages stayed relatively consistent from year to year, indicating that that spending is staying in line with previous spending. Couple of fluctuations is that the instructional support services and then sites, buildings and equipment, you see a bit of an increase there and that's related to some capital purchases as well as the L T F M and building projects that's happening. So those two pieces of the pie are really shifting some of the other ones. So there's additional costs in those buckets, shifting some of the percentages that you see here. That doesn't necessarily always correlate to, you know, if you see a percentage decreasing, that doesn't necessarily correlate to the dollars decreasing, so. Here we have cash and investments as well as total fund balance, so showing the decrease happening here over the last few years. And then here we bring everything together for the general fund and, and look at some more detail in the fund balance components. So we've touched on revenues and expenditures already as well as the change in fund balance. And here we see that that, the net effect then, or the ending fund balance is at right around one million, just over a million. All of the components of that then are listed at the bottom here of the slide. So the first category there is non-spendable. So that's for items like prepaid expenditures or things like that where the dollars have left the building, so to say. You can't count on that for future operations because you've already spent it. That's required to be pulled aside in a separate category. Then you have a number of items under the restricted component line item. Those are all of those state mandated funding sources where you need to spend the dollars in accordance with how you receive them. So very detailed, lot of specific information about that. That category, if you add all of those up, the restricted categories in total, decreased by three million. And then that leaves us with the unassigned. So that's what's available in future, for future operations without any earmarks or tags associated with that. That category decreased four point eight million. That is the line item also that correlates to your fund balance policy, which indicates that you'd have five percent, that the unassigned fund balance would have five percent of the expenditures at the end of the year. And if we run the calculation, you're at point seven percent. Here is yet another way for us to look at fund balance and that is unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures. And we are able to compare this with state average information, so that's the main reason we kind of include it here for you, but showing where you've been and where you are in comparison to state average information. So here we have the food service fund that is separated in a special revenue fund. And revenues here decreasing for the year, there was lower reimbursements for federal dollars, just as the programming is kind of going back to, to normal there. And then on the expenditure side of things, increasing with increased costs and then seeing a decrease in fund balance as it relates to that, so ending the year at three point two million. And then we have community service fund listed here. So revenues and expenditures both increasing, just with kind of going back to, bouncing back from a programming standpoint and showing an increase in fund balance there. And the components of it are listed below, showing the community ed is at a deficit at the end of the year, but did gain some ground compared to last year. And we see that very frequently, that there are components that that happens to within the community education fund. Happy to take any questions anyone might have.
Any questions from board members? Director Thompson?
Yeah, can you go back three slides? I think that graph is super helpful as a visualization. Obviously, lots of external factors that kind of put us in this position, just to be, so traditional school districts, the blue line is how much we ought to have into, in our fund balance.
It's a state average.
That's a state average of all traditional districts. So there's a number of charter schools and things in the, in the report where this information is housed. So we didn't include those types of school districts, we included just traditional districts. So that's the average across the entire state. So the, the smaller districts along with the larger districts, that's the average as it works itself out.
Right, I would assume smaller districts need more money just in case because it's...
Usually, usually that is what we see. For cash flow purposes and all of that.
Got it, yeah. And, and then I believe, as I was listening, like, ten percent is where we want to be-ish in savings. Does that sound about where we landed? Eight, ten percent, about eight?
I think board policy is at five percent, we start having those discussions.
Okay.
We talked about this in our work session, about having a discussion around whether we should change it from five percent to... we should change it from 5% to something different.
And that 5%, that's unassigned. This is, there's multiple ways to look at fund balance. So that's different from what you're seeing here as well. This is unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures. So it's more complex to pull all the expenditures out. So that's why we go from what the state provides already and runs those calculations.
Thank you.
Director Kelleher?
I guess the only, I don't really have a question. The only comment I'd like to reiterate is that we were given an unmodified or a clean opinion, and it's the best opinion that an auditor can provide.
Correct.
And how many districts generally receive an unmodified, like an opinion like ours, which is 100% clean?
The unmodified opinion is, that part is very common, I will say. It's rare, and that's not ideal for us to ever not be able to provide a full opinion. So that part is pretty common. The uncommon part is to not have a finding, internal control finding. That's probably more on the 5 to 10% where you don't, I mean, that part's more rare. Like I said, in most cases, there are things that pop up, there's duties that overlap, there's things of that nature that come into play.
So there's a lot of appreciation that needs to go to Bill and his team for the work that they do to make sure that our money and our funds are being managed and handled appropriately and within budget and within the ethical guidelines and standards.
Director Thompson?
Can I get clarity on that? Because so unmodified, so you're saying that they're, how they are tracking the accounting practices is accurate, super clean, no issues or concerns in regards to governance practices and whatever regulatory rules that are out there? Is that?
The opinion is based on the financial information.
Yep, so, but how the financial information is being tracked and, correct?
On the financial numbers of the information. We also consider internal controls. We go through that, but we don't test internal controls, if that makes sense. So we aren't giving an opinion on internal controls. So if you're looking at opinion on procedures, that we don't do. That falls outside of what our process is. But we consider them as we go throughout. And if there were things that came to our attention as we went throughout that process, we'd be reporting them back to you.
Director David Anderson?
So I remember when I first started on the board, we used to get a call from the auditor to answer our questions, and they asked us questions. Why did that process stop?
So that happens, but it happens on a selection basis. So we don't interview every person. It's random, and it changes from year to year because we want to talk to various people.
Thank you.
Director Carly Anderson?
I just, I know earlier I said that we talk about things in the work group session, and you know, what we talk about here is maybe, maybe shouldn't repeat everything, but we did acknowledge Bill and his team. Is there anyone, Bill, do you want to come forth and recognize anybody? Because I feel like you've been under a lot of heat and pressure for a while now.
Well, and Bill's team was at the work session too.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, my full, my full accounting staff was at the work session. I do want to thank them again. They put in many, many hours to put this information together, to close our books and to give you a, you know, a good final report. And again, we don't have any findings of anything that we do on a daily basis. They watch that every day. I do have, Michelle, Michelle is here. She's our controller of the district, and she does a tremendous job making sure that everything that we're doing is correct and we're dotting and crossing all the t's.
Yeah, they were there. I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity.
Yes, I appreciate that, thank you. Any other further comments from the board? All right, thank you so much. Congratulations, Bill, on your team.
Thank you. We do need a motion to accept.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the FY '23 audit.
All right, we have a motion by Director Kelleher. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Carly Anderson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, next item is B, City Joint Powers Technology. And I think that's Bill again.
As everyone knows, we are, we are building a new elementary school. And part of that is we need to get fiber hooked up to that building and be in the same network as all the rest of our buildings. In the past year, we've had a great partnership with the city of Lakeville. They've been very good to work with, and this is another good example. And we do the same for them. So some streets, we have fiber running down the street. Some streets, the city has fiber running down the streets. So instead of us having to put in new fiber from a new building to our next closest building, which would be Century Middle School, you know, which is estimated at $300,000, the city has put together a joint powers agreement with us where we can share their fiber from Highview over to Century Middle School. Now, in, part of that is the whole project will be done by the city. So the city, the city will be allowing us to use 12 fiber strands of their fiber from our building over to Century. They'll be doing all the splicing. They'll be taking care of making sure that all the right of way is in order, and they'll be managing the full project. Our part of that is of course tell them which fiber to hook up to, but a cost of $75,000, which is paid out of the bonding for that school. And this agreement is good for 20, 20 years at this point in time. So this is a very good deal for us. This will be presented to the city at their next city council meeting in a couple of weeks, but.
I'll make the motion.
So we have a motion by Director David Anderson to approve the city joint powers agreement. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Lind. Any further discussion from the board? Director Thompson?
Yeah, so was the, was the original $300,000 allocated into the budget to have the fiber installed, and now we're actually saving $225,000?
Well, actually, the original allocation wasn't quite 300. So we were a little like, whoa, 300, we can't afford that. So this has been a great, a great compromise to take care of the costs. Because yeah, our estimate was half of that. So we're still saving.
So we're saving $75,000 overall in the budget. So no need to hit contingency or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, letter C is the sale of a property, and again, that's Bill.
As you know, US Home LLC, which is Lennar, has approached the district a couple, actually probably been close to three months ago by now, asking about a property that we might be willing to sell for them to put some single-family housing on. And the property in question is the property just north of Kenwood Trail Middle School, which is property that we don't, we don't use at this time. The price that they've offered up to us is a million dollars. The other piece that is there is if their plat can be larger or more lots than this, than they've talked to the city about at this point, we would get another, I'm going to find the number here.
Another 46,000. It was 46,000, wasn't it?
So sorry, so yes. So I don't expect that to happen. I expect the $1 million purchase.
Per lot.
Yeah, per lot. So anything over 21, so 22, 23. The purchase agreement that's been brought forward has been signed off by Lennar at this point. Our attorney has signed off on this. The only, we had a question from the board asking about closing costs and whether that should be shared half and half or not. The closing costs are actually more for the seller. So actually, what they have is actually helps the district with a lower cost. So our biggest cost for this is really the deed tax that will be part of it to the county, which is a .33%. So it's about $3,300. That would be our big piece of selling this. And of course, a small fee for our attorney going through the, through the document. So tonight, I present to you the purchase agreement and would like you to take action on it.
Dr. Vinzal?
You may want to explain where those dollars would go, what fund, and how they can be used after that.
These, these dollars, as they come to the district, are all capital dollars. So they get set aside and put in our capital fund for future use and some type of capital purchase that the board would deem that we should do. So this is not general fund money that we're able to use in any way for any type of staffing. It's all capital funds.
Director Thompson?
Do you have a visualization that we can share or, I don't know, if it's something that's been posted online or?
Well, there is a small visualization in.
In the document.
In the document itself, I believe. Maybe it's not in this document.
Yeah, it's the.
This is something we can, we can put out, but actually the last page, the very last page.
It's like the Frisbee Golf Course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you know where the Frisbee Golf Course is, when you drive up to KTMS on the right-hand side of the driveway, that's the property we're talking about. There's 14 acres in there. Very hilly, lots of low, very wet areas in there.
Director Thompson?
And then are we still confined to the design potential of what it looks like? Is that something we're going to talk about or no?
And we talked about this a little bit again at the, at the work session, but the design that is there right now is what the city would prefer. And one of the reasons is, in the morning, when all of our parents are coming in to drop off their students, that driveway gets very, very, very busy. With a roundabout there, people from the, from the, from the housing area can easily get out. They don't have to wait for the line to be down. They just go through the roundabout. So it's very easy. Now, of course, there's nothing here is final yet. We're still working with the city exactly what that's going to look like. But at this point, that is just the idea that's put in place to make traffic in and out as easy as possible.
But that's a city decision, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Director Thompson?
And then to clarify, again, when we sell this prop, sell this land, when you take a right going into the Kenwood driveway, that is now then would be owned by the city?
Yeah, that'll turn into city street.
City street.
And we would only have a driveway from the roundabout.
From the roundabout. So when you make a right, you're going, and then when you make that left-hand turn, that's where the roundabout will be placed in the initial designs.
The roundabout is before the left-hand turn. You turn right or you turn into the driveway. And about three quarters of the way up that hill, that's where it would be.
Got it.
Director Lind?
The size property, was that 14 acres?
I believe it was 14 acres, yes.
I think a point should be made, it's too small to build anything on if we were going to build a school. So it's land that we can't really use.
Because of the topography and the size, the state of Minnesota, when you build a new elementary school, their recommendation is to put at least 30 acres for an elementary and anything else larger. And this is far from it. This is actually smaller than any of the property we have in any of our schools that we have now. So it's not big enough to have us be able to put a building on there.
All right. Director Thompson?
And to disavowate, we've got no buses that go through that. It's just mostly just cars that go through that driveway.
The busing at Kenwood Trail come in the second driveway, and they go around back and unload in the backside of the school.
So this would be?
They are not co-mingled with the, with the parent traffic.
So for parents, teachers who need to go there, they will be going through the roundabout and then park where they need to park?
Yes.
Got it. And then the city maintains that road for plowing, all that good stuff with the sale?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the sale of the property?
I motion.
We have a motion by Director Shinley. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Carly Anderson. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, so we have no additions to the agenda tonight, so superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
Are you going to do the video first?
Well, I'm going to say hopefully everybody had a good MEA weekend or time off for that. But this evening, I would like to share with you and our viewing audience a referendum update. Just a reminder, on November 7th, Lakeville Area School District residents will vote on whether to approve funding to staff and operate Highview Elementary, new elementary school opening in the fall of 2024. The request also includes a second question for funds to attract and retain high-quality staff to expand K through 12 mental health, behavioral, and academic support services. This referendum request is in response to continued student and community growth and putting what the existing pressure that's being put on our elementary school space and to foster academic excellence for all of our students. We do have a short video that the guys are going to queue up to share with you. So with that, if you'll turn your attention to the screen.
Why don't you turn and tell your neighbor let's have a great day, and then you can walk to your seat.
Our Lakeville area community is growing in popularity, in large part due to the quality of our schools. As new residential housing construction has grown across our cities from Lakeville to Alco New Market, overall student enrollment continues to grow. Over the past five years, elementary enrollment has grown by over 12%. In the next five years, elementary enrollment is projected to grow by at least 17%. That's a conservative estimated growth of at least 900 elementary students alone. Thanks to our community support, construction began on our new elementary school, Highview Elementary, last summer and is well underway. An operational levy is needed to appropriately staff and operate the school building. As a result, the school board voted to put forward a request to residents this fall. On November 7th, residents will vote on a two-ballot question referendum. Ballot question one will address crucial staffing and operating components necessary to operate Highview Elementary, which include the hiring of a school principal, support and office staff, custodial and ground staff, a school counselor, and other specialists. It would also cover the cost of utilities, instructional supplies, and materials. The growth in our district isn't limited to the elementary level. In the next decade, overall student enrollment is projected to grow by at least 30%. As our student population grows, student mental health, behavioral, and academic needs continue to grow. An additional support is needed to help our students thrive. Ballot question two will ask residents for funds for K through 12 mental health, behavioral, and academic supports, as well as the means to attract and maintain highly qualified staff. If approved, the estimated tax impact for the average homeowner in the district would be $15 per month. If voters do not approve these ballot questions, our elementary school class sizes will increase, limiting personalized attention for students and causing overcrowding. There would be other significant costs such as relocations of staff, students, and families due to disruptive temporary solutions such as boundary changes. Essential resources for K through 12 students such as mental health, behavioral, and academic support services would be limited further, hindering the growth and success of these students. Such setbacks would represent a missed opportunity for our students and staff as our urgent needs would persist should the referendum fail. The school district has always taken a conservative and respectful approach, asking our taxpayers for only what we need, when we need it to benefit our students. Thriving schools help build thriving communities, which in turn increase home resale values. Vote early or on Election Day. Early voting begins September 22nd, and Election Day is November 7th. Get the facts and learn more about the referendum by visiting ISD194.org/growingtogether.
Shared at opening day, but we just wanted to be able to show that because not everybody wants to look at a pamphlet or go to a website and read through a bunch of stuff. They want to get the gist of what's going on. So that's a way to be able to do that. I think we also have another slide that will show about an upcoming community meeting so that we can invite families and community members that want to learn more about this upcoming referendum to join us and join me at the referendum community meeting on Monday, October 30th at 6:30 here at Lakeville Area Schools District Office. That is at 17630 Juniper Path, Suite A. So even though you can't see the slide right now, I bet it's about to pop up here in a second and maybe.
So Suite A is that, that room across the hall, correct?
Community room.
Yep, the community room. So there's that particular slide. If people can see that, they may be watching online. It's also on our website. Also, as it said in the video, reminder about early voting. It's available here at District Office, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Also a reminder, there will be extended early voting hours. That'll be available Tuesday, October 31st through Friday, November 3rd, from 8 to 7 PM. Saturday, November 4th, 8 AM to 5 PM. And Monday, November 6th, 8 AM to 5 PM. Election Day is on November 7th. Polls will be open from 7 to 8, and you can.